Come to order, I now open this commission up for business.
Thank you Sheriff, and I would like to invite Reverend or Pastor Chris Roberts, the interim pastor at First Methodist Church in Telahoma for our invocation, sir.
Thank you for having me. Proverbs Chapter 3, Verses 5 and 7 says, "Trust in the Lord with all your heart, and lean not on your own understanding, but in all your ways submit to him and he will make your paths straight." Let us pray. God of grace, we come before you, offering our thanks for bringing us together safely. Lord, sometimes it's easy to forget that our safe arrival and our departure is a grace from you. And Lord, as we prepare for this meeting, we ask that you would be with us. May our thoughts be led by you and our conversations be inspired by you. Father, help us to put our own agendas to the side and seek your will and outcome for this meeting. Lord, please grant us wisdom in times of uncertainty and clarity in times of confusion. Father, lead us to solutions that best benefit this county and strengthen us as a group. In Jesus's name we do pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Hirschman, would you please lead us in pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Sixteen present, thank you. We have Commissioners Morris and Commissioners Miller are absent tonight. Next, we need to approve our agenda for tonight, and if I could have a, we have a motion on that. We have a second, and it's properly before us, and do we have any discussion? Motion to amend by Commissioner Hunt. If you'll state your motion, please.
The motion to amend is regarding the resolution designation numbers. In recent conversations, it has been impressed upon me and us as a body to follow our own procedures and be consistent in doing that. Our resolution numbering system by our own procedural rules are required to have the first four characters shall be the applicable calendar year, and the last two characters shall be the numerical values assigned in sequential order. I wish to amend all resolutions contained in this agenda to reflect those procedural rules.
We have a motion, and we have a second, and what it is before us is we will strike any, we will not have only numeric resolutions, no letters on them. And that would change our two to 2023-06 and 2023-07 tonight. Commissioner Seaborn has seconded it. Do we have any further discussion on amendment? If not, we're prepared to vote on the amendment. All those in favor signify by voting aye; those opposed, vote no.
Sixteen yes.
Motion carries. Now we're voting to approve the agenda. As amended, we have a motion, it's properly seconded. Do we have any further discussion on approving tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote. All those in favor signify by voting aye; those opposed, vote no.
Sixteen yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Next is our public comment period that we do every time. We're up to two minutes per person, and we'll allow up to 20 minutes for this. And anybody that would like to come up and address the body now is free to do so. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen of the Coffee County Commission, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I wish to commend all of you as a legislative body in action, which actually went back to the table and worked out a reduction in the $2 million deficit. Thank you for your due diligence as a legislative body in action. How much did we save the county on that? It's less than $2 million, so that's important. Although you took aim at part of the problem, we're only halfway there in solving some of the budget deficiencies. The problem of unfair compensation still exists. Some offices remain at the 4% increase in compensation; others remain at 8% or greater in compensation. But tonight, we have the opportunity to set the direction of Coffee County at a more level course for all of our employees. If we fail to compensate those at a lower pay scale and raise those at the highest pay scale, what happens to our direction here in Coffee County? I ask you to make a further attempt in correcting the compensation percentages on behalf of Coffee County employees and our community here in Coffee County. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, very much. Do we have any additional public comments? Yes, ma'am.
Just a few things. Every official office, every department is very crucially important and does very important tasks every single day. My office, for example, if I am not running above board and my office is renting haphazardly, it affects every piece of real estate in this county. Every office has very important details. It takes, in my office, it takes a good year to have a trained recorder, a good year. So I ask of you, this is going into my ninth year, and every year I think it's going to get better, and it hasn't. And I ask you to make that difference for these employees. They work hard. I cannot even begin to tell you what it was like in my office today. I wish some of you could have been there and seen it. There's no slacking. We needed actually two more people in there most days. I have three full-time people right now. I have one out on FMLA. The work does not stop. It's recorded in the moment that we get it. I can't stack it off till the next day, only if it comes in after 3:30. Along with that are very, very important details that happen in that office. I have done nothing but be accountable and transparent to the citizens of this county, and I ask each of you to do the same, to do the same, care. And I appreciate what you're doing, and I know your seat is not easy. Mine isn't either. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have any additional public comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to the review and approval of the minutes of the last meeting. We have a motion, it's properly seconded, the issue is before us. Do we have any discussion? We have a motion to amend by Commissioner Hunt.
For the same reason I stated regarding the agenda, I wish to amend the minutes of the last meeting to reflect the designation as provided in our procedure to four digits for the calendar year, followed by two digits regarding the sequential order in which they are presented to the body.
You've heard the explanation, it's properly before us. Do we have any further discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, are we prepared to vote? All those in favor signify by voting aye; those opposed, vote no. This is to amend the approval of the minutes. Amendment.
Sixteen yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Now we're back on approval of the last month's minutes as amended. We have a motion, it's properly seconded. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote on approval of the minutes of the last meeting. All those in favor signify by voting aye; those opposed, vote no.
Sixteen yes.
Motion carries, thank you, ma'am. We have no resolutions or memorial sympathy proclamations or commendations at this time, but I would like to go ahead and make an announcement that a former commissioner, Benny Jones, whose daughter now serves with us, is going to receive one of the highest honors known in the political world. He will be the statesman of the year for the 4th Congressional District and be recognized at the statesman's dinner this Saturday in Nashville. It's a highest honor, and we look forward to his family enjoying that, and he deserves it 100%, and we're proud that he's from Coffee County. Thank you. Elections, appointments, and confirmations, we have none. Now we moved on to unfinished business. The Health Department Construction Status, we are still, Commissioner Hunt, feel free to jump in if you want to, but we're still in a holding pattern, waiting on Ernst &amp; Young and the state and the federal government to all decide how they're going to allow us to do professional services. Mariana has something to add.
I did have a meeting today, myself and Stephanie, our purchasing agent, with the Ernst &amp; Young representatives, some state people, and Pam Browning, and we believe we have our RFQ pretty well worked out, and they're having a meeting tomorrow, and they'll let us know by Thursday. But it was a very good meeting and got quite a few of their questions resolved.
And hopefully, the work we've done will be good enough, and we can start from that point. But it's quite complicated with all the different entities involved. Committee and vacancy appointments, we have none, and now we move on to 10, number 10, Item D, the fiscal 2024 budget, which is now Resolution 2023-06. We have a motion, we have a second, it is properly before us, and open for discussion. Okay, where we left on June 27th was the amendment that just gave a 4% across-the-board raise and included the raise for the Budget Director. So that's actually the amendment that is before us that we need to discuss. Is there any discussion? If not, we're prepared to vote on Commissioner-
We are picking this up just like we left it, is that correct? We're voting on the amendment.
Right, this is the amendment, this is the amendment to do a 4% across-the-board raise and just the raise for Budget Director only.
Would, I have a question. Since the Budget and Finance Committee met and actually changed the budget resolution that was before us, June 27th, do we still have to take up this amendment even though it's to a different budget resolution?
Yes. Mr. Parliamentarian says, yes, we need to dispose of this amendment, so if you're in favor of it, you would vote for it; if not, you'd vote against it, and we continue to discuss. So that would be where we are at this point. So do we have any discussion before we vote on this amendment?
So I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I don't know when you were in last meeting. Does this 4% just apply to the general fund, or does it apply across all the funds? Because we have some raises in other funds, sanitation and such, that, I don't know where this amendment lies.
Chairman Morris, you made the amendment. Would you like to restate it?
My understanding was it applied across all the funds.
Okay, his amendment is to apply to everybody across the board.
So just to clarify further, there are a few of those that were passed by independent boards, such as the 911 Board, and also, I believe, does the, does the, does the public sanitation, Chairman Hunt, you got any comments on whether we can roll back the raise that was done for the sanitation workers?
I'm sorry, I did not hear you.
My question is, can we roll back the raises that were passed by the sanitation solid rule waste?
Are you asking me if I agree to that, or is it possible?
Yeah, is it possible?
If I'm not mistaken, the amendment presented by Chairman Morris had an additional amendment that we referred to as a friendly amendment that allowed the sanitation workers' raise to stay in place. That's the way I remember it.
Okay, so Chairman Morris, would you like to again state your motion?
Okay, so we can leave the sanitation raises there. Are there any others? That's general fund, isn't it?
So the motion is to give everybody a 4% raise, leave sanitation as it is, and leave the Budget Director's raise as it is. That is the motion before us. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote. All those in favor signify by voting aye; those opposed, vote no.
Seven yes, nine no.
All right, motion fails. Now we're back on the budget itself, and, which is Resolution 2023-06. So we need to, we're back on it, open for discussion. Do we have any discussion? We have a motion properly seconded. Chairman Hunt?
Yes, so I was trying to keep up with what's going on on this device, so I have moved to approve the current budget as presented from the Budget Finance Committee meeting from last week, correct? That's one we're on, the present budget.
Yes, sir, and it is the one that is in your packet tonight, the new one, and it reflects the two work sessions that we've had.
Okay, this budget that was worked on by Budget and Finance Committee, I made the motion to approve it, to open the floor, to put it on the floor in an amendable state. The Budget and Finance Committee did not offer, any member did not offer an amendment to it, so it passed, if I'm not mistaken unanimously, at Budget and Finance. So I feel like this is a good budget. I do, I do know that we have grave concerns regarding the deficit as projected. We have a history of overcoming deficits because of fund balance, revenue gains, and stuff that are, that are pretty much, our Budget Director has a good feel for this stuff, our Budget Finance Committee Chairman has a good feel for this stuff, and I'm confident that we are doing the right thing passing this budget tonight.
Chairman Hobbs?
So I just want a little clarification. Last night, we met, and we found a couple items that were different from what Budget and Finance passed. So are we going to address those, or are we just going to vote on what they were, right? I mean, you found some more areas to save some money last night, I think the numbers were different, and if this packet that we have today is a reflection of that, then it's different than what passed at Budget and Finance, right?
That is, that's correct. That would be a bit different, so we would, I guess we would need, we would need a, Chairman Seaman?
So I guess we could do this either way. I mean, budgets are typically presented as presented, it's, to me, it's up to the committee's pleasure, maybe the Parliamentarian can correct me. If everybody wants to go and make independent amendments on those, then we can do that, or if we just want to describe them and accept that that's what we're voting on, I don't have a preference either way.
We can do either, but it is my understanding, Mariana, that anything we discussed would be in this new budget. We would need to adopt this budget as amendments to this budget, then we could adopt the budget.
We talked about last night, I, that we just had some communication.
Could you-
But I did make those corrections when we were in here last night.
Could you, now in this meeting, and we can take as much time as we need to, could you identify anything that is different from last week when we spoke, that we spoke about last night, that could be in this budget so we can adopt those individually?
The, okay, there was, in the trustees' budget, I had $7,000 under, let me get there. Yes, hold on. It is page number, it's part on 18 and the top of 19. Postal charges, I had $7,000 and you had 75, so I raised that to 7,500.
Okay.
That was one. The rest were down in the sheriff's budget. That is page 22. He had, the sheriff had asked, agreed to overtime, that is line 187, to be reduced to $50,000, and not the previous amount, I think it was 22-
Correct.
Something.
Right.
So that one. And then communication, that one was reduced to 43,750. Contracts with private agencies, 9,000. And the other one was tuition and training, which is 356, was reduced to 5,000. Don't recall there being any others, was there any others in that?
You had an increase in liability insurance.
Okay, as far as your budget, though, the sheriff's.
Okay.
But there weren't any more in the sheriff, the five, oh, okay. The jail, yes, was, I know, that's the next page, 23, we reduce printing to zero. The other one, evaluation and testing, that is now $6,000.
Say that number again, please.
Evaluation and testing, number 322-
Right.
Is, oh, I'm sorry, 22,000. Get me a straight edge. I mean six, sorry.
So it went to six, negative six.
I don't have my ruler, sorry. Let's see here. And then communication should be 28,800.
Down from?
28,8 to 22,8.
Yes, but I had 28,8, and that's what we ended up with last night, so I didn't decrease it.
So it's 28, it's communication?
28,8.
28,8.
Yeah.
That's for the jail.
Jail, right.
Okay.
Um, let's see here. I don't believe there was any others in that line.
Down at, Mariana, down at 441.
Oh, 441?
Yeah, and I'm sorry, 451, line out on 451.
Oh, uniforms?
Yeah, it went from 9,735 to 47,35.
Okay, that was reduced down to $5,000, uniforms. Is that it?
Okay, I've made some notes here, I'm going to try to encapsulate this, and then someone to amendment, this would reflect any changes that we discussed in the work session. Additional $500 in postage to the trustees' office, the sheriff's overtime budget would be reduced $22,000 to $50,000. His communication budget would be reduced to 4,375. His, what is it with private agencies, is, was that a negative 9,000? It's just reduced to nine.
I mean, it should be 9,000.
Okay, so it's reduced to nine?
Yes, to nine.
Okay, and then tuition and training is reduced another 5,000 from the sheriff's budget?
Yes.
Jail budget printing has been zeroed out.
Correct.
Evaluation and testing for the jail is negative 6,000, 6,000 less.
Okay, correct.
Communication budget for the jail is reduced 28,800?
It's 28,800, I think actually we did-
Should it be 28,8, or is it-
It should be 22,8, but I didn't want to change it because the fund balance I put up there last night at the end had 28,8.
So for the purpose of this amendment, we'll keep it at 28,8?
Okay.
And jail uniforms were negative 5,000?
Yes, 5,000.
So those are the changes that are, they're reflected in the budget that you see now, but we have not adopted them officially into the budget that you see now. So we need a, yes, a motion to amend, which we have Chairman Seaborn. Yes, we have a motion and a second to amend the budget with what I just discussed with Mariana. And would anybody like for me to discuss any parts of that again? Is there any further discussion on this amendment?
We did have a few more, are we going to weigh-
I want to put them all on there, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
If we did.
We had some in some other budgets, is what it was.
Okay, well, let's put them all in here.
Okay.
So we're still working on your amendment, Chairman Seaborn.
We had some in rabies and animal control. That is page 26. 357 Veterinary Services was reduced to $15,000.
So this amendment will also reflect a reduction down to $15,000 for veterinary services under animal control.
And then the next one, right under that, 401 Animal and Food Supplies, that was- And then the next one, right under that, 401 Animal and Food Supplies, that was reduced to 2,500.
So also in this amendment is a reduction of 2,500 and food supplies and animal control.
Then on page, let's see where that's at in here. So let's see, contributions to other agencies on page 29. That was reduced $10,000. Which was, the Telahoma Fine Arts Center was reduced 5,000 to 5,000 and the Humane Society to 5,000.
Okay, thank you. That's also included this amendment. We also had, South Central Tourism was negative 3,000. Just, let's, just, we'll be right with Chairman Morse, I got you on the list.
Okay, sure.
Tennessee Backroads Heritage was reduced by 6,000.
Okay.
And the mayor's discretionary account was reduced by 15,000.
Okay, yes. I, I had already had those, but that's all right.
And that should encapsulate the amendment. I had, we had some discussion with Chairman Morse.
And then I have one more, one more.
Okay, yes ma'am.
And other charges, 58,400, that is, should be on that same page, 29. We had an increase in our liability and cybersecurity insurance. It, it was about $83,000, so that new total was 731, 786. And then we reduced the line 594, which is in that same budget, specialized medical treatment to zero because that's not a recurring expense.
So the specialized medical, let's get the numbers exactly right. Specialized medical was 49,987 reduction. But you had an addition on, on the insurance of how much?
I won't tell you exactly. 82,468.
Okay. All right, I'm going to do my best to make sure we have this tight and we'll say it one more time on your motion, Chairman Seaborn, and the second by Stubblefield. This is the motion to amend the budget currently. Trying to put her, all of our numbers together. We have a... The salary supplement reduction, is it added in there also? Chair, Chairman Morse?
This is to amend and then we'll have discussion on it, right?
Yes, this would be to add these additional items.
This is not approving it this time.
Not approving the budget, it's just consolidating an amendment, then we'll discuss the budget as a whole. The salary supplement that was reduced?
See, I already had some of those in there.
Yeah, that was already in there.
Those are already in, I'm just making sure everything's.
Yes, I apologize. Yes, that one's in there. The one, the codes position is staying in the sheriff's office.
All that's already been voted on, it is in there.
And that had already been presented as changed, an earlier amendment.
Okay. So these changes, trustees' office additional 500 in postage, sheriff's overtime is reduced to 50,000. Communication is reduced by 4,375. His private agency funds, 9,000 now. Tuition and training is negative, another negative 5,000. Jail printing is zero. Evaluation and testing for the jail budget is 6,000 less. Communication budget for the jail is now 28,800. Jail uniforms are negative 5,000. Veterinary services for animal control are negative 10,000 or 15,000. Was it 15 or 10?
It is, 15,000 is.
So it's reduced by 10?
We reduced it five. I had 20, 20,000, we reduced it to 15. Well, it's not negative. It went from 20 to 15,000.
So a negative 5,000 on veterinary. Food supplies, what was that, negative?
It was 4,000 and it's 2,500, so it's 5,000.
Reduced to by 1,500. The Humane Society is 5,000 now. The Civic Center is 5,000.
Fight Arts Center.
Fight Arts Center, I mean. We added 82,458 in liability insurance. We deducted 4,988, $49,987 in specialty medical services from the jail. We reduce the, get to my tourism budget here. Almost got it. We reduce South Central Tennessee Touring Association, 3,000. Tennessee Backroads Heritage, 6,000. Mayor's discretionary account, 15,000. That should be the totality of the new, of this amendment to the budget as a whole. So what we're going to discuss now is this amendment before we vote on adding it to the budget. Do we have any further discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Do we have a total of the number that that reduced the budget, these amendments?
Can get that quickly.
We did add some revenues, so the net is 581,759.
571?
581,759.
581,759 was the reduction.
That, that wasn't the reduction in spending, correct? That's the, that's the, the net.
That's the net change in fund balance and the deficit. It, it changed it by, it lowered it by that much, reduced it.
We have any further discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote. All those in favor of adding this amendment to the budget signify by saying aye. Those opposed, vote no.
16 yeets.
Motion carries. Now we're on the actual budget, which is Resolution 2023-06. And we have a motion and a second on the budget. Do we have any discussion? Yes, Chairman Seaborn?
So I just want to make a couple comments since I'm, since I'm the chair and I guess I'm supposed to make some comments. First of all, it's my first year serving as budget chairman and just wanted to say thanks to all the members of the budget committee that have served and appreciate us having a member from each district now. I think that gives us good representation. I know there've been a lot of questions about this budget in the last few weeks and that's probably my fault for not figuring out how to communicate it better ahead of time. And I just wanted to reassure all the members regardless of whatever we decide here tonight that as we go forward into the next year, I pledge to work to figure out how to improve that communication and try to get that out. It, it's a challenge to figure out how to explain all of it, especially when you're looking at a budget sheet because so many of these line items actually have a story attached. Marianna can't put all those stories in the official budget sheets. The state would not appreciate that very much, but maybe we can figure out a way to do that next year. I think the budget is, is a pretty good budget. I think that, yeah, the pay raises aren't exactly the same, but that's for deliberate reasons. There's been a lot of discussion that, you know, we shouldn't pay any one person any more than the other, but I want you to consider that if we do that, anybody that's being currently underpaid would be locked into that position forever and I don't, I don't think that's a tenable position regardless. So anyway, I'll, I'll close my comments there, but I appreciate everybody's work on it. I appreciate whatever work we're going to finish here tonight and I look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote on Resolution 2023-06. All those in favor signify by voting aye. Those opposed, vote no.
10 yeets, 6 no.
Motion carries. Move on to Resolution 2023-07, which is the tax levy resolution. Would entertain a motion and a second on the tax levy resolution. We have a motion properly seconded. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, who, who was the second on that?
I haven't.
Okay, it made it. I just wanted to make sure it made it up there. Madam DeFord, yeah. Okay.
Dennis made the motion.
I saw it, I just saw it disappear though, I just wanted to.
Yes, it disappeared.
But anyway, it's, it's, it's before us improperly seconded. The Parliamentarian has declared that since this was also postponed from the previous meeting, it already has a motion and a second, so we are in the discussion phase now of the tax levy resolution. So do we have any discussion? Seeing none, are we prepared to vote? All those in favor of Resolution 2023-07 signify by voting aye. Those opposed, vote no.
16 yeets.
Motion carries. Move on to 11, new business. We have nothing in personnel manuals, no new budget approvals. We do have some notaries. If you go down to 11E, it will require a vote. Could entertain a motion and a second on approving our notaries. It's for us, properly seconded. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote. All those in favor signify by voting aye. Those opposed, vote no. Commissioner DeFord has left the room, so we'll just remove her.
15 yeets.
Thank you. The motion carries. I have no purchasing resolution. Next is reports from committees. Budget and Finance, Chairman?
Uh, don't, don't have, we've talked about that enough, I guess, but I will say our next scheduled meeting should be the fourth Thursday of this month.
Okay. Health, Welfare and Recreation, Commissioner Halsworth.
We don't have anything scheduled at this time.
Uh, law enforcement, we have no activity. Beer board, no activity. Capital Outlay, Chairman Hunt?
I'm going to defer and let Commissioner Frank Watkins report tonight. He never gets to say much.
You can check the minutes.
Policies and Procedures, Chairman Hirschman?
I'm going to refer to the minutes, please.
I like that answer. Industrial Board, no activity. Strategic Planning, Chairman Lynn?
We'll be meeting again a week from this Thursday, so next Thursday night, we're starting in on trying to get our goals and recommendations written.
Thank you. Do we have anything on Planning Commission? Chairman Hunt?
Defer to the minutes, please.
Okay. Purchasing, Property Sales Committee, Chairman?
Yes, we, we sold the old health department on Saturday. It brought a good price. The city school, Manchester City Schools purchased that property from us, so I think everything went well.
Thank you. And I believe the purchase price was 481,000, which is what we needed, at least that amount in our budget to be able to build our new health department. And I've been told that that could possibly close as soon as this week, Friday, barrister says. Lightning, Lightning Fast, Ambulance Authority, Chairman Stubblefield?
No, no activity. We meet third Thursday.
Okay.
This month.
Exit 105 Joint Committee, I'm just going to go ahead and say that I'm planning on dissolving that ad hoc committee because it has done nothing, so I'm going to officially dissolve it now and I'll recreate it with three members here and the city can recreate it, but it's been completely stagnant for seven months and we're going to have to get it going again. So the 105 ad hoc committee is officially dissolved. Investment Committee, no activity. Solid Waste, Chairman Hunt?
The, I would like to make a statement that our convenience center workers deserved the raise and I'd want to express their gratitude to the body for approving this budget that does have their, their raises in it. An interesting thing today, we just received at the sanitation department, new compactor units that go into the convenience centers and the manufacturer made a little mistake and painted them the wrong color. We have a consistent color countywide of maroon for dumpsters and compactors and these came in, I would consider it a navy blue and our superintendent, Rennie Bell, was really concerned regarding that and so he asked me to come out, you know, and we discussed it whether to accept them or not because they did not meet the purchase specifications. But we, we decided to go ahead and accept them. They're actually going to give us like some spare parts to sort of compensate us, but I think it's going, if you guys, when you use the convenience centers, you're going to notice a difference. I think it's a, a good PR thing, actually. The citizens of Coffee County get to see that we are spending money keeping good equipment that maintains the needs of our citizenry. That's it.
And that is very expensive to maintain that equipment. Legislative, Chairman Morse?
No meeting is scheduled at this time.
Okay. Rural Roads and Bridges, no activity. IT Committee, no activity. 911 Board, Chairman Stubblefield?
Uh, no activity. We meet next on August 16th.
Audit Committee had no activity. EMA Homeland Security, no activity. Wastecide, wastewater authority had no activity. Library Board, no activity. Election Commission, no activity. County Board of Equalization, no activity. Coffee County Highway Commission is not here for a report. That moves us to number 13, which is Statements and Announcements. The first one I'll do is state that our next official commission meeting is September 12th, 2023, but I do anticipate a work session to be called in August for us to discuss a lot of pertinent issues, so look for that to be called out so we can get together and, and talk about how we're going to plan this next year out together. And with that, do we have any other statements and announcements? Chairman Brown?
I understand the employees, the county employees is underpaid. They've been underpaid for years and years. And until we, as commissioners and the help of the mayor, in my opinion, get a salary study and get these salaries where they're supposed to be, we're always going to have the same problem every year. So we, we've got to fix this problem. Hopefully, we can start working on it soon.
Any other statements or announcements? Seeing none, we're prepared to adjourn. Non-applicable to have a motion to adjourn? So moved. We're adjourned.